Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second reading of ordinance 2024-21, amending an ordinance affixing and determining salary, wages, and compensation for CWA local 1088 employees.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, Affixing and Determining the Salaries, Wages, and Compensation for the Officers, Employees, and Members of the Governing Body of the Township." This is for the CWA Union Agreement. It is a two-year contract. This is the second reading, so open the floor.
See now make a motion to close it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2024-22, amending Chapter 79 of the Township Codebook so as to create the position of police investigator.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 79 of the Township Code entitled "Officers and Employees So As to Create the Position of Investigator for the Police Department." This is a position within the CWA Union. Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
See now make a motion to close it? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, you're getting slow, man. It's getting slow and I can't see, and I can't see.
What's the difference between an investigator and a detective?
Entirely different because it's civilian. It's a civilian title, so we have a clerical person that has been doing firearms reviews and approvals of that, doing different discovery, and they petitioned civil service to the state of New Jersey to say that their duties were not a clerical duty, but they more aligned with that position, and civil service granted it.
Gotcha, so it's not...
It's a civilian.
It's like the dispatchers that...
No, no, it's the clerical people. And that title is part of the clerical union as well.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for clearing that up.
Thanks, Barry.
Anybody else make a motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-262, authorizing the execution of an agreement with CWA Union.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, ratifying the terms of a memorandum of agreement and authorizing the execution of a collective negotiation contract with the CWA local 1088. As stated earlier, this is a two-year agreement.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-263, authorizing the appointment of an assistant violations clerk.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Dawn Marie Jacoby to the permanent full-time position of assistant violations clerk for the Township of Lacey. This is to fill a vacancy in her municipal court office.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-264, authorizing a provisional promotion in the police department.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, provisionally promoting Brian Weckes to the position of investigator for the police department pending promotional procedures due to the result of a desk audit. Veronica just explained this one, this was for a desk audit. His job duties were not within the title that he had.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-265, appointing regular members to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Heather Scanlon and Carol Mittlesdorf as regular members to the Environmental Commission for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-266, authorizing the execution of a solar project.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a solar project, site access, and due diligent agreement with the Distributed Solar Projects LLC.
Move it.
Second.
The township is exploring the opportunity of a community solar project.
She paused.
This would be on a vacant piece of property behind Public Works. Again, this is exploratory and would allow site access.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-267, authorizing an inter-local service agreement for the Board of Education for an alternative day program trust.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local services agreement with the Lacey Township Board of Education for the alternative day program. This is for trust, which stands for Together Rising Upon Successful Transition. So it is for grades nine through 12 to intervene with students who might be on long-term suspension or those who are socially, emotionally, or academically struggling.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-268, authorizing a donation to the Ocean County Vocational Technical School, excuse me.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the donation to the Ocean County Academy of Law and Public Safety. We'll be donating a retired police vehicle to the VOTEC public safety program for them to use and learn.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-269, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township current and trust accounts. This is in the total amount of $3,730.22.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-270, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refunds of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-271, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $2,52,945.13.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, abstain on 20035. I'm sorry, T, T 0035.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve the caucus minute meetings from September 12, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve township minute meetings from September 12, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve executive session minute meetings from September 12, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Abstain.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the committee. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of short things this evening. This first is for our seniors. Between October 15th and December 7th, be aware that it's the Medicare Open Enrollment, and it's specifically, it's gonna talk about Part D, and this will affect what you pay for prescription drugs. So I would say familiarize yourself, go to the website. If you have to make any changes, you have until December, from October 15th to December 7th to do so. Was at a Veterans Commission meeting last night, I was reminded to remind all of us that 11/11, at 11, November 11th, at 11, out front, will be our annual honoring of our veterans. In addition, on December 14th at 12 noon at Good Luck Cemetery, it's a wonderful national program called Wreaths Across America, and I'm sure the mayor will comment more on it, and she's very involved with it, and she's a wonderful strident supporter of it, as we all are. So that'll take place. It's, if you have a veteran in your family, or you wanna just thank one of these men or women, it's so appropriate and it's wonderful. It's a little bit of a tearjerker, but go there, please, December 14th, and support all of them at our beautiful cemetery over there. Last order of business, there is gonna be a school board referendum. We asked some difficult questions last night, as Mr. McDonald and myself are the liaisons to the school board appropriately. Veronica was there, who is knowledgeable on all these matters as well. So my ask for our residents is to just educate yourself. What I had said was I wanted a very clear explanatory statement. Sometimes I've been told, in the 11 years I've been up here and in and around the political scene, we can't really understand the question. Can it be explained better? So my ask was that it be explained well. We, several of us attended the presentation last week where the school board holds their school board meetings. This presentation was an hour in length, and sharply right after that, the school board meeting commenced, so appropriately it was open to the public. I do wish more public were there. As I counted, I took the time to count one night, that evening, and I counted 25 people. So I would say, we all wanna be supportive of our children. I'm not here to take a position one way or another. Please educate yourself, it's gonna be an item moving forward. And that will conclude my comments tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the information session for the school referendum, and I think Pete had, his comments were right on. I would say that everybody do their best to educate themselves on what they're voting for and what the schools are trying to do. Question one, or when they, there were a number of people there, they did ask a lot of questions, and I thought they answered them as best they could on the referendum. If question one, from my understanding, if question one, there's three questions, and if question one fails, then the other two automatically fail. But you have to, like Pete said, just educate yourself on what you're voting for and why you're voting for it. And my last comment on that referendum is, capital projects, our capital projects and the school capital projects are extremely expensive. So you have to be very aware of what you're spending the money on and how you're spending it. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennis. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I was unable to attend it due to a lingering illness that I've had for the past three weeks. So I really can't comment on the meeting. But I will say, and I kind of, I agree with Mr. Curatolo, Mr. Kennis, educate yourself on this. This is vitally, vitally important, what they do, what we decide to let them do. And the other thing is, just remind everybody that Lacey Day is on Saturday. Hopefully the rain will hold off, and we'll have a good day, because what we usually do is usually get about 3,000 people out for that. So hopefully that's it, starts at noon time. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I'm just, I'm just gonna remind you, obviously, about Lacey Day. It's a big event, ensures very good attendance, and it's, the children are there too, so it's important for everyone to get out and bring the kids out and let them enjoy the day too. Also happening on the same day is, it's called Wing Fest, it's being run by the Veterans Association, and VetWorks will reap the rewards of it here in town. So if you have the time to go over to Cafferty's between 12 and 5, and as I said, it's called Wing Fest, so at least it sounds like it'd be good and some good food. But that's all I have. Now I'm gonna open up the floor to the public. Anybody?
Hi.
Hi, how are ya?
Denise.
Hi.
Nice to see you guys. Quick question. I did find out from the DEP that we do have our benches in, new benches for the front beach property.
For the park?
So I was wondering when they're gonna be put in, and what's the holdup kinda?
I don't think...
There's other jobs that come of priority. They're on the list to be installed as they work down their list of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the list, let's put it that way.
It wasn't explained, like...
Yeah. They're on the list, believe me, to be put in, so...
Okay. I didn't know if we were waiting for a following...
No.
I didn't know if we were waiting for a special thing?
No, no, no.
So that's why I just...
They have other jobs they have to fulfill beforehand. Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other jobs. Thank you, Denise. Mr. Bender?
Harry Bender's somewhere in Lacey Township. Couple of things. Last meeting, I had asked about access to the Warden House, and I'd like to ask the mayor, okay, because I understand what you said, Senator, the mayor, for the committee, access to that building basically is holding up our application, and I know who the question was asked, why, you know, what's going on. You never know what tomorrow's gonna bring, so I'd like to move that forward. So there are a few questions, and I'm gonna share an email with you about that. But I'd like to be able to answer those questions for the people at the state, and asking for the committee, what is the answer about my access to the Warden House? Because the Warden House actually was listed as eligible as a historic site, I believe it was 2015.
Okay. So again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on my lawyer here to tell you that because it's in the process, there is no if, ands, or buts.
Well, the governing body has made a decision to sell the property.
Right.
Which includes the buildings on it.
Right.
Okay, so we're right in the middle of a contractor agreement that includes the entire premises, including those buildings.
Gotcha. But right now, it's still the property of the Township of Lacey?
That's correct, but we're under contract.
Okay.
So in other words, you are under contract to sell your house.
Yep.
On the property is your garage.
Okay.
The garage, that goes with the property.
Right.
You wouldn't want anything to happen during that time of the contract.
I don't mean to be contrary, but if I was selling my house and it hasn't closed yet, I still have access to my house.
Not if I have an agreement to purchase everything that's on that property. I can't breach that contract.
But I'm saying, along the lines of the example that you used, if I'm selling my house and I have a contract pending on my house, that doesn't mean I can't access my house, my garage, et cetera, correct? Or am I wrong? I've sold houses in the...
If you own a property, you can allow access.
Right.
In any way you want to.
Right.
I'm just advising the governing body that the property is under contract.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, understood.
It's under his...
But again, I wanted to remind, because there were comments made at the end of the last meeting about the Warden House. In 2015, 15, it was stated by the historic, I forget the exact name of the commission of the state of New Jersey, that it's eligible to be registered as a historic site, and just wanted to share that also.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bender.
So I'm assuming...
I'm going by the legal advice that I'm given.
And I listen to the mayor. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the audience, Spore?
I'd like to say that I've missed you for a couple of months.
I think she means... I wanna apologize for not being able to come up and see you, good people, for the last couple of months. So anyways, Steve Boral, Forker River, and I don't know if some of the questions I'm gonna ask are redundant because I haven't been up, but of course, I'm gonna touch on some, you know, touchy subjects. I noticed we got our new tax bill, and we got a big increase in November, and then it slides back down a little bit. And people were asking me what that was for because they thought that only school things were gonna be with the referendum vote. But people say that the increase that we just got is also school-related. Now, could you clarify that, Ms. Mayor?
They had the increase of the 9.9% tax increase that they put forward. They approved that.
That's, that's been approved?
Yes.
Okay. So it's all school-related?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And unfortunately, that November bill is higher because the bill that you paid on August 1st was an estimate.
Right.
So you have to make up for what, we all have to make up for what we didn't pay in August and November. So you're getting like a double whammy.
Okay, well, there's a lot of unhappy taxpayers over that.
We all feel this, we all feel it too.
I just wanna clarify, I'm the spokesperson for many other Lacey Township residents that are either too busy or don't have the intestinal fortitude to come up here and talk to you, good people. So anyways, some of the questions I've been asked, and some of my own questions, are all intermingled here. And I just wanna clarify that we have paid Johnson Controls the penalty from the nine-page agreement, pre-construction agreement that Mr. McDonald signed.
Yes.
Okay. And with the, on top of that, the $38,000 engineer report brings the bill up to, I believe, $310,000.
Was it three, ten, three or five, something?
Okay, so it's over 300. So, you know, which it really annoys me about this, and some of the questions I wanna ask is, why did it take so long? What was going on behind closed doors? What is the current status of the new municipal building as we stand today?
There is no status on the new municipal building, there's no more discussion, we haven't had another discussion on that at all whatsoever, no way. Why it took so long, I think it was just a matter of, like, billing. I, they, we were waiting for it. We kept wait, you know, we kept assuming it would be here, and then it finally came in.
Okay.
What was the third part of that? There was another part.
So as I recall from previous meetings, it was the, an attorney, I guess working for the township, that recommended that you guys sign that pre-construction agreement, which I think was very bad representation, and I wanna know if there's any action gonna be taken against that attorney, penalty, or be fired for misdirecting the township committee to spend at least almost $300,000.
What attorney you're talking about?
Well, when I've asked previously, I don't think it was you, Mr. Connors, it might be one of your friends, but I don't think it was you. When I asked about previously, why, Mr. McDonald, why was it signed, I believe the answer I got, and maybe I'm not completely right, was that you were given the directive to sign that agreement by the attorneys representing the township.
I told you it was me.
Was it you?
I suppose, it's my law firm.
Okay.
We don't direct anybody to sign anything. We review the contract, we advise the client as to what's in the contract.
So you didn't give a recommendation either way? You just reviewed it and handed it back to the township?
There were a number of revisions that were made to the agreement.
Well, the only revisions I'm worried about was the penalty phase.
Well, I understand, but the parties knowingly knew what was the consequences of signing the agreement. That's all an attorney can do.
Okay. And you didn't, you don't think that's irresponsible?
To advise...
You don't think it was bad advice?
To advise...
I don't know, I can't understand why...
You may have signed agreements that if you showed me, I looked at them, I would say that your attorney might have made a mistake in you signing an agreement. As long as you're aware of what's in that agreement and what the consequences are, it's up to the client to determine whether they sign it.
Okay, so the responsibility is on the committee? Okay. Now, did the township committee put this payment on the township website to notify the public that this money was spent on the Johnson Controls and on the engineers?
Unlike any other payments, we don't put them on the website, you know, I don't think that's...
Was there any public notification about the spending of this money?
The bills list is posted.
It's on the bills list.
It's on the bills list. It's posted on the bulletin board, a couple of days before the meeting.
Where's the, where's this bulletin board at?
Right here, outside this door.
Right outside the door.
Right outside the tax office. That's all you're required to do, is post it on the...
Well, they gotta update the requirements.
Regina actually went out in the hallway last time and brought it back in and looked at it, and then went back and reposted it.
Okay, since the responsibility goes back to the committee, is the committee gonna make a public apology for spending all of our money like that?
I don't think there has to be an apology, I mean...
Do you think you did something wrong?
I don't think we did something.
You don't think you did something wrong?
No, I don't.
And that was a good usage of the township's tax money?
No, it's not a question of that, we, we...
Well, it is a question of that.
Are you gonna let me speak?
Ahead, Ms. Mayor.
We, we were in agreement to go ahead at that time, we were in agreement to go ahead, so that was part of our commitment to do that. That's what we had to do.
Did, at that time, did you realize the circumstances regarding the schools?
No.
No?
No.
You had no, there was no vision about getting hit with this big tax liability with the schools?
Again, let's, let's constantly remind ourselves that we are two separate entities, okay? And if some, if one entity isn't doing something, it has nothing to do with the other person and what they can do on our side, okay? We've, meaning that, you know, they don't make decisions on what we're doing, right? They don't, they're not making a decision on what the tax, you know, would be on their side worrying about you paying 9.9 increase. They're not, they're not putting that over on us, okay? That's their, what they've increased. Can't, we can't be talking when I'm, when we're speaking up here, okay?
We sit back here.
Okay, well, all right, could you turn, could you just?
I don't know.
There's a, there's a respectful way to say it and a respectful way not to. You could have just said, could you please turn the air off, because we could, you know, easily take care of that. Um, I don't know where I was.
Okay. My next question.
You want to jump in, Mr. Burrow, if I could?
He'd like to jump in.
You're talking about Johnson Controls, correct? And that payment we had to make?
Why there was another company involved?
No, no. What I'm saying to you is, what I'm saying to you is, this is, this is a, an international company with multiple levels of expertise. The five of us couldn't get out, the five of us could not get out there with levels, tools, tools from Home Depot, build a site plan. We're not licensed engineers, electricians, or anything of the like. There was going to be some cost to put this plan together. That's what I could tell you.
My, my recommendation is that whenever the committee has anything nearly as, uh, monetary monstrosity like this, that it should go out to the public before you guys even take, go to step one. Because right away, you're signing an agreement that kind of like handcuffs you in a way to stick with the project because of the penalties you got to pay. And I believe if you had a vision of about the way Murphy has chopped the support to our schools, right? Murphy did that, right?
Right, that was after.
Huh?
I did not see that coming personally, if you're asking me that question. If Governor Murphy was going to cut the way he did surgically to certain districts that may, may not support him to our schools, I did not see that coming.
Okay, aren't there lawsuits challenging him taking the money from primarily Republican townships?
Now you're, now you're getting into things where, I'm not going to speak for the school board. There's a lawsuit, there was a Lacy Township School District entered into a lawsuit about the application of the formula. That's what it was, and it's been kicking around up in the courts for four or five years now. That's what Lacy Township Board of Education entered into.
And you guys have nothing to do with that?
Nothing, no.
Okay, all right. So, in conclusion, the, the new building's dead. There's nothing in the works, no secret meetings, no anything going on about that.
No lining of my pockets, nothing.
Has the committee, have you guys had a, a meeting on how you're going to replace that money? Or how that money's gonna, it's just gone and forgotten? Yep? Okay.
Well, I'm not su, I, I never understand where you're coming from. You're, you're basically complaining about that you're paying too much taxes, and yet you have no problem with keeping that, the buildings that we do have of commercial property that, to not increase the revenue on our commercial property.
What building are you talking about?
This building and the, and the.
Well, a lot of people disagree with your theories, Mr. Kennas.
That's fine, but so then where are you expecting?
Okay, you're a builder, so you got an alternate, you got an alternative motive.
So where do you want us to get our, where do you want us to get the money to pay for things?
Well, what do you do? You raise the taxes. The taxes are raised every year.
So if you want to keep.
Every single year. We got to get something going with the power plant.
If you think it's good to keep raising taxes, I don't. I would prefer that we maximize our property that we have and get the most revenue out of it that we can.
Stripped walls and concrete, front to back.
It's Route 9. Do you think there's anything scenic on Route 9 or Lacy Road? These are the two ugliest roads in the state.
Well, I disagree with that. You, you apparently haven't been around all the state.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, that's all I got right now. And I also heard that there is a lawsuit regarding the Wharton and, um, selling of that?
We've not been received.
No?
Not received any notification of that.
No notification, so. There's a lot of rumors going around town, you know?
It's called chatter.
Up at Recycle.
Always will be.
Down at the liquor store, you know, a lot of people talking, you know, at the loose. But they don't show up at the meeting, so they ask me to do the dirty work.
Yeah, Mr. Burrow, if I could, one thing. I know Steve Kennas for a long, long time, and when the man talks about land use, he knows what he's talking about. The fact of the ma, maybe he didn't deliver it that you could understand, but what I will tell you, what I'm going to tell you is, the fact of the matter is, there is no revenue drawn from a government entity. This is a primary, this Lacy Road, County Road 640, is our primary commercial property here at the apron of Garden State Parkway North and South. To get revenue, this building's been here since 1969, I was one-year-old back then, think of all that revenue we have missed since then.
Hmm. So what ideas, what ideas does Mr. Kennas and the committee have to make us better than being the most unsightly township in the state?
I'm proud of the way our, our town looks.
Oh, you're proud of it?
Yes, I am.
Not Lacy Road, Route 9, no, I'm not, no.
You're not?
No, they're ugly.
And how would you fix it, Mr. Kennas?
I'm not going to go into detail now.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Bender.
Yes.
One minute. I'm going to get Mr. Bender up, he has another question, so.
Last question, I promise.
It's all right, Mr. Bender.
Um, last meeting, you spoke of due diligence, and we spoke with the county as far as the Wharton House goes.
And what did the county say to you?
No, you spoke to the county.
Oh, yeah, I did, yes.
Yes, you spoke to the county.
This is months ago, we're talking months ago.
Absolutely, absolutely, and my question is this, and I, I'll ask the attorney.
Get me a money's worth tonight, I'll tell you that.
The Wharton House is included in part of the sale?
Correct.
Okay, so for argument's sake, if we found someone, okay, for argument's sake, in along the lines of due diligence, if we put something out there that said, because there's history, regardless of vinyl windows, et cetera, okay, a person lived in that house who was a survivor of Andersonville during the, during the Civil War. If we found a Civil War group that would be interested at their own cost of taking the Wharton House and moving it somewhere else, is that something we could do, Senator?
That would be up to the buyer.
Would be up to that, up to him.
Yes, you'd have to speak to him about that.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question, because there are, there might be people out there that would be interested in saving the building, and that's why I'm asking. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Come on up, Carol, you missed your name being called.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, somebody's got to do it.
Carol Middlestorf, Lunaca Harbor. I did a little research since last meeting about the application for the museum, and going through the master plan, looking for the Historic Sites Commission that doesn't exist anymore, that would be the party that would help with that application. It says that the planning board in town is responsible, and I'm going to, this is your, may I? It's actually the master plan, and it states that the planning board is supposed to view and make sure there are all the historic properties, and they're going to help with all of that. So I think it might be a better avenue, if you would like to work on the application, that we start through the planning board, and I would be more than happy to step up and help them, because I don't think the Historic Society's credentials regarding that kind of research or funding would be, if you agree with that.
Yes.
And can we look into that? And I wanted to piggyback on what Barry said about historic properties, that because the Wharton House is eligible to be on the registry, and it is a municipal property, it does have protections currently. So I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but there are protections when a property is municipally owned, like the museum, and it's eligible to be on the registry. It is, it has some protections, not as many as it would be if it were on the registry. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Could you actually bring that to the Building Department and give it to either?
You want me, I can bring it to the Planning Board?
I would give it to our, the Planning Board Secretary or.
Yeah, I mean, right, yeah, I was going to just.
I mean, I, if we can all do it together, it would be, yeah.
I'll take care of it, I'll get in touch with Irene about this.
But I'm thinking that it would be helpful to kind of go through the right channels, and I.
We're both on the planning board, so.
Oh, cool.
I will meet with her and get this to her and see where we have to go from there.
And it's to get a inspection to make the museum eligible to be registered. The same thing that the Wharton House, there's three houses in town that are eligible that came from the Dorothy Guzzo inspection in 2005. Wharton House, and then there's two other houses on Route 9, over in the widening of the road. Everything else is possibly eligible from the 1981 survey by the county, so we'll all learn together.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Bob Luray, Lacy Township. Actually, Steve touched on something, I actually, I brought my tax bill with me tonight. There's a reason I did it, and mainly because it's just like this meeting and everything. For the past year, I've been coming to a lot of these meetings, so I was fortunate enough the other night to go to the referendum meeting at the school. Reason I brought my tax bill, I mean, we all could disagree and agree on how different monies are spent, but the one thing I'm finding constantly is, even the ed, most educated people in town do not know where their taxes go. And I even had a nice ride from the airport with a car service, listening to somebody that knew everything about Lacy Township, and had no clue where's, well, his question was, is where's my taxes go? I said, have you ever read your tax bill? Why? It tells you where your taxes go. And the only reason I bring this up is because you hear this more and more and more, and I really commend everybody that comes to these meetings, because you learn a lot from both sides, your side and this side. The reason I bring this up tonight is because only 20% of your total tax bill, roughly, 21%, goes to your local taxes. So all the things you enjoy in Lacy Township, whether it's this garbage pickup, the lease, the fire companies, the parks, or whatever, it's only 20% of your tax bill. Yet everybody comes up here, pounds, basically about the same amounts go into the county, which you got your library, tax, your health, tax, all these other taxes. Mr. Cortello brought up a good point. There was only 25, 26 people at the meeting the other night. The school board takes 60% of our total tax bill. Basically, it's off a couple of tens, but you got, county's taking 20, town runs on 20%, the school system runs on 60% of it. And like, you know, the answer, Steve, our taxes are going up because of that 60%. We need the people to show up at the proper meetings if they want to talk about taxes and we're all concerned about it. I downsized a few years ago to bring all them costs down. But we got to start focusing some of our efforts in the right direction. And I only bring this up tonight because still people do not understand that the school board don't control township government, the township government doesn't control the school board, but yet 60% of our taxes are spent on the school. And I'm not saying that in a negative way. What I'm saying is, I've noticed in every month, more and more people coming up here and complaining about the school, just, but they don't show up at school board meetings.
Right.
That's where it's got to be directed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Fingers.
Yes, that's what, that's why Pete's a good earpiece, why.
A little bit. Trying to be nice, too.
It was nice to see you at the picnic, Mr. Bednick.
Oh, yes, nice to see everybody who was there. Good evening, Mayor and Township Committee members. Okay, so on a number of issues that were brought up tonight. One, um, in November of 2021, I came to a meeting here with a lot of people to talk about the possibility of a new municipal complex before the town was even publicly talking about it. I then spoke and warned the Township Committee at that time that it was a terrible time to be doing this because of the high inflation, et cetera, et cetera, and it would be a hardship on the town. The Township Committee went ahead, signed a contract in 2022 anyway, and now spent, I believe it's $348,000 is the amount, 310 to Johnson Controls, and then there was $38,000 for another survey of this building, which was involved with the project. You know, that's our money, you know, and I don't care, you know, we could talk about who, who, where most of the money goes in this town in our taxes. Yes, we know that the schools get the largest amount of our tax money. But the issue at hand is, is that there's got to be accountability.
We're accountable, I don't know what, what else we can do. We've said, yes, we did.
Well, I think first of all, apologizing to the taxpayers for wasting this money would be a more, very appropriate thing to do. It would also, that you acknowledged that this was a mistake.
I think I did that six months ago, Mr. Bednick.
No, you said.
I apologized for stating that I said, my comment was that night, was, that I'm sorry we got into something before we had talked to the public about it. I, I wish we had gone to the public about it. Yes, that's what I said, I'm sorry. I don't think I need to sit here and say, I'm sorry that we spent money on something that we thought was going to be a wonderful adventure for our town. I'm, I'm not going to apologize for that.
No, of course not. But the rest of us have to basically bear the burden.
The rest of us include me, I live here.
Right, but you're not being paid, and you're not on this body to be making mistakes. This is the problem.
It's not a mistake, I don't see it as a mistake.
It wasn't a mistake, it was an error in judgment.
That's your opinion, and I have an opinion.
No, all the taxpayers will probably agree with me on this issue. And I don't mean to be combative about it, but you were warned, and you wasted that money.
You say you don't mean to be combative, but every month you come up and say the same thing to us, so you are being combative about it.
I don't want to be, just agree and accept the fact.
There's nothing else we can say, there's nothing else we can say or do to change it. It's done, it's happened, we're moving on.
Two, questions and discussions were brought up tonight about the, by the current government body, about the referendum. There have been several meetings, may I add, about the referendum, and there'll be more. I went to the first meeting, which was, to me, a disaster, because the people who are conducting the referendum on behalf of the school board could not answer basic, simple questions, and they basically have lost all of my support because of that. They couldn't even tell me what the soft costs for this project were going to be. And maybe they didn't want the public to know. That was my main problem about it.
Again, I'm going to remind you that that, that's, that's over there, that we can't answer those questions for you.
I'm not asking you to.
Okay.
It was brought up tonight by a couple of people who went to the meeting, and I'm glad that you went to the meeting.
Okay.
Quite frankly.
Did something right.
This government body should start, and should have, been using its influence, A, to do everything in its power to tell the school district that the 10% increase was a no-go. None of you publicly stated that. I mean, I came here during this time period when it was in discussions, and I, I spoke about this, and nobody actually publicly spoke out against it when you knew people in the town are suffering. Again, it's about accountability. And it, maybe you need to start speaking out, maybe about the $92 million referendum, that it's going to be too much of a hardship. The other thing I want everybody to know, because this is something that will be affecting our town, is that the school district is counting on 40% of this money to be reimbursed by the state. But the state can pull the plug on that at any time, and they actually did it to the school during the solar panel project. So we could get stuck with a lot more money in payments. It's a no-go. And the other thing, too, as far as I'm concerned, and I will fight this referendum, and I will spend my own money to make sure, to fight it. Regionalization is what needs to happen. The state passed S2 many years ago to do exactly this. The children will get a better education, the taxpayers will get relief, and we don't need to be spending $92 million on a turf field and putting new roofs on and destroying the current solar panels, which still have life in them. And there's, that's also another thing, it's going to cost another million dollars in the school's budget that they haven't even, you know, fanned them what they're going to do. I mean, it's fiscally really irresponsible, and I do go to the meetings, and I am very much involved. And it is 60% of our taxes, and it probably will be more in the future if they get their way. I mean, you are our leaders in this town. I am speaking for the people who I talk to who can't afford the taxes.
Funny, I speak to a lot of people, and they, and I don't, you know, I'm not saying that everybody agrees with everything we do or say, but on a whole, you never seem to say anything good about this town. So if you are so unhappy with this town, I don't know why you're here.
I'm not unhappy with this town.
You never say anything positive about this town.
Let me, let me finish.
You never, you never do.
Okay, okay, I'm not here to be positive, I'm a watchdog. I started a watchdog group in 2010 called the Lacy Citizens for Responsible Government. Mr. Dykoff, who isn't here tonight, he actually wrote a whole big thing that somebody else sent to me, you know, about challenging me about running for a government body. Well, you can't be a watchdog and be on the government body that you're watchdogging. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And this is my job, I'm not here to compliment the town, I am here to speak for the people.
I don't need you to compliment us, I just, I think after a while, it's like it's exhausting, that you, you just have nothing positive, positive.
Exhausting?
Yes.
That's your job, Madam Mayor.
Well, listening to negativity all the time.
Not only me, it's, it's up to you to listen.
I listen to positive out there. Wherever I go, I hear wonderful things from people.
Okay, did you read, did you read all the comments?
Time's up. Sorry, time's up. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Go right ahead.
My name's Thomas Fallon, thank you for the opportunity to address you again. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the proposed development of 101 North Main Street, where the proposed Quick Check is going to be developed, and subsequently the Wharton House is going to be destroyed in the process. Mr. Kennas, I completely agree with you, Route 9 is a mess, it really could use some revamping. And, you know, I think it's a great opportunity to open a discussion about, like, what is the vision for this town? Because I drive through a lot of different towns, whether it be Red Bank, Tuckerton, and you can see or see a very clear and concise vision for the town, yet when you drive through Lacy, you don't. It's a, you know, there's no architectural designs, Route 9 takes an hour to get, you know.
You're 100% right. You're 100% right.
You said you're 100% right.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But it's not a matter of me being right, it's, you know, what am I going to leave to my children? I have no plans of leaving Lacy, unlike some people. I have a vested interest, I own a business in town, I live in town, I plan on staying here for the duration of my days. But the real question is, is as those days progress, what am I going to be handing off to the next generation? And, you know, to, Mr. Kennas was, you know, accurately saying, you know, there, it's a mess. It takes an hour to drive half a mile, and, you know, we keep developing and developing and developing, so I, I would ask you all, you know, we, we continue to develop, but at what point did we stop and say, are we going to be able to handle this development?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
You may go right ahead, Mr. Bednick.
You, you had said, sir, that you, you have a business in town.
Yes, sir.
Plug it, let, let me hear what it is. I mean, I'm, I'd like you to.
Sure. It's Pop Hop Plumbing.
Okay, great. Okay. So, people come to me all the time, it's probably the most, and I, I, I don't speak for my colleagues, but I'm sure they've heard it ad nauseam. And people come to me, and they'll come to me and shop, right, I'll be getting a coffee somewhere, and they'll say, why in the world do we need another of this? Why, why are we opening another nail salon? Why are we opening? And my answer is, a gentleman like yourself decides to be, open a plumbing establishment, people come with their money, they take a chance on their ability and their background on their ability and their background and their education, and they plant a flag in our town, and I only welcome it too much. I don't have, when somebody comes here to open a business, there's very little opportunity to say no, and I don't want it. I think that's bad. It's bad for a lot of things. I don't think it's fair to the business owner. I don't think it's legal. I want business because I, but when people say that, what do you open? We're not opening anything. People come with money and dreams, and they take a chance on the American dream. We got to cultivate that.
But at the same, and please don't misunderstand my position. I'm not anti-commercial in any way, shape, or form. However, I am all for making smart decisions, decisions that add value to the community, decisions that, you know, improve the life of the community, of the residents.
But sir, respectfully, you want me to say no to your plumbing business? I can't cherry pick my way through paradise.
Which, but at the same time, we decide what lofty variances we approve and which ones we don't. And, you know, we're taking an environmentally sensitive area and putting a gas station there. You know, that's going to be discharging right into the creek right in the back, which ultimately goes into Enos. It's literally 50 feet away from someone's front door. Is this the most appropriate site? I don't think so.
He not only had to get approvals from the township, though, he had to get from the state, if I am correct, and CAFRA. I mean, county, he, you know, this isn't like he just came to Lacey Township and said, I want to do this on the corner of Route 9, okay? He had, he had to go through a lot of paperwork to get to where he is, okay?
Understood, but at the same time-
No, well, I just want to make it clear, because you're making it sound like you did, the comment you said was that-
He was given lofty variances?
Yes, lofty variances, okay?
Absolutely.
So I don't think they were lofty variances. That's my personal opinion.
Well, you were there for half of the meeting, and there was, you know, again, multiple variances, you know, to allow him to build on that site.
Well, we also cut back on some of the things that he wanted to do, okay?
Where he closed down one entrance on the residential street.
Right, right.
He had two, and then he put it down to one. He reduced-
I have a question, because I've been wanting to ask this. I'm just curious. If this wasn't built on your corner, would it bother you?
I would have to, I would have to think about that, because, you know, quite often, you know, we-
It's an interesting-
We can have compassion and empathy, but it would probably end there, to be realistic and truthful.
No, no, I'd rather you be honest, because I get, I listen to a lot of people say things, and I read a lot of things that people say. And I'm just wondering if they care enough if it's just about because it's their corner, or would it bother them if it was on my corner?
I think, you know, the location of it wouldn't bother me as much as the destruction of a historic building and the center of the town, Welcome to Lacey being a Quick Check. That certainly doesn't represent the Lacey that I would be interested in living in. You know, again, you come to the center of Route 9 in Lacey, and we have the Welcome to Lacey sign, and it's underneath the Quick Check. I would hope that I would live in a town that would have a clearer vision for what we can hand off to our children, rather than a corporation.
So the center of town really isn't there anymore. The center of town is really Gilly Park, which is why, it was part of the reason why we want to replace this building with buildings back there. That's essentially the center of town. Lacey Day is there. All major events are at Gilly Park. There's nothing held at the corner of Route 9 and Lacey Road.
But I guess, just to get back to my original point, you know, has there been any planning put in place?
So I could, not to cut you off for that, but-
For the corridor of Route 9 that we continue to develop.
So we, every now and then, we do petition the DOT to widen lanes, request signal changes. It's incredibly both frustrating and time-consuming. It doesn't usually get very far. I touched on this in my comments at the end of last meeting. I'm going to bore everybody to death, but land use is incredibly complicated in New Jersey, and it takes, so like I said, on the historical parts of Lacey Township, that visioning has to occur 30, 40, 50 years ago to get to where you want it today. And that's, anything that goes on in a town forward is a similar timeframe. So whatever you're doing today is really being planned out for 30 years.
But the decisions that we're making today certainly do have an impact on some of ours.
No, you have to, that's what I'm saying. If you're trying, you can't, because anything that's before the Planning Board today, for example, is being based on zoning rules and regulations that have essentially not changed much, and our zoning went into effect in like 1974.
So just to-
Or thereabouts.
Go back to my question. Is there currently any requests out to the DOT to make improvements to Route 9 to accommodate all these new businesses?
All the time. We were at meetings with the county a month ago.
Let me just say this. I was at the meeting. Anthony, the mayor was there, too.
Yes.
Veronica was at that meeting, too. Commissioner Sedege held a meeting. Well, all the towns that line up on Route 9. The real problem is, you know, my suggestion was to make a turning lane on Route 9 in the middle, so you can go left, you can go right depending, so the cars can keep moving. The DOT doesn't want any parts of that. What they want, and this is where the problem really lies, is they want eight-foot shoulders on both sides of Route 9. Think about that.
So if the DOT is unresponsive, and again, I'm sensitive to the fact that we need to generate revenue as a town, you know, that's, it's part of money coming in, money coming out. It's not rocket science. However, with that in mind, if we're continuing to develop the town but not improve the infrastructure, that's a recipe for disaster. So perhaps maybe we need to start pursuing other opportunities to generate revenue, because we are including all these businesses in town and multifamily dwellings and continue to grow the town in that capacity, but yet the taxes keep going up. So how is it helping?
I understand your point. So specifically to the old community hall, that site has no infrastructure to it, not modern infrastructure. So any, they're required to put modern drainage, which is, captures the runoff from their site, filters it before it goes out. Right now, that just sheets off into Enos Pond. So whatever they're doing, drainage-wise, drainage-wise will be better than what is currently happening there.
What's currently going on?
Except that now it's going to have oil, gasoline, excess-
But it goes, but they have to capture their own, not disputing that, but it's happening now. It goes on now. You're getting, you're getting-
They have a parking lot.
But it sheets off, and there's, so what they, they have to capture it onsite, filter it onsite before they could discharge it out to their detention.
So as a plumber, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a lawyer, you know, I'm not, you know, an administrator for a lifelong period. You know, as a regular citizen, how do I find out what you all have envisioned for the town that I plan to stay in?
Well, when we do, we haven't done it in a while, but the town is mostly governed by its master plan. It's supposed to be updated every 10 years or so. I can't remember, I think it was probably 2016, 17, we did a minor update.
So has there been any change to the-
There's been discussions about doing it, but the, but what winds up, other problems get in the way, or other priorities get in the way, so it never gets addressed.
So are we still actively pursuing to become a regional center for the county?
We've received our town center designation. That's what I said.
Town center.
They're very technical terms, and it's not quite exactly what it sounds like. But just, just a minor point on the planning. So they're reconstructing Manchester Avenue and Western by the schools. So when I first got on the committee, that was my, I think that was the only time I went to OSHA County Engineering Meeting. That was my first year on the committee, and it's, and I've been, it'll be 12 years when it terms up. So that's, that was discussion 12 years ago, and they're just doing it now. 12 years ago, that's how long ago. That's, my point is on this stuff, it takes that long to somebody, to, you know, create the vision of whatever the county wanted to do with that intersection. It's taken 12 years now, 11, for them to begin construction of it. So those are the horizons that we look at.
So we're not actively pursuing the regional designation anymore?
No, no.
So we received our town center designation.
Regional, no. We don't qualify for regional. We qualified for town center, which we received May of 2017.
Yeah, we received what we were trying to-
That document is online on our website.
So, you know, again, I appreciate everyone's time. You know, environmental impact, quality of life impact, you know, historic site, you know, being eliminated from town at Welcome to Lacey Town Center. That's currently there and will continue to be when the sign remains there after they develop the Quick Check. I would just like to say that I stand in opposition to the development of the site. That land was left to the people of Lacey. Here we are now in, under contract, selling the property, developing it into a 24/7 Quick Check right in the middle of a residential zone, right on the doorstep of an environmentally sensitive area. I mean, I'm not going to say that, you know, we have a history of bad decision-making. However, you know, at some point, we have to stop and say, you know, is this really the vision for the town? I understand we need ratables, but there's a right way to go about it, and also a wrong way to go about it. We're in the ninth hour. The deal isn't closed yet. Please, you know, take a consideration that perhaps maybe this site could be used for something else. You know, that could develop revenue in an alternative way, whether it be tourism. I think it was part of, you know, the self-assessment report of 2008 that they recommended that historic development could be used for tourism. And the report also noted that Lacey Township has done absolutely nothing since 2012 to encourage, you know, historic preservation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Bidnick, would you like to come back up? I try to be fair. He doesn't know it, but I do.
Okay, to leave off where I was. Mayor Giuliano, you made a comment that I don't like this town, okay? First of all, I wouldn't have moved here if I didn't like this town. I don't like the direction that this body is taking this town. That is my qualm with, I don't like the idea that you went ahead and spent what I told you, that money on a building that we're never going to have, that could have been used to be used to update this building. I don't like what you're doing with the Warden House and that property. I was, I think the first person who publicly came up here in January and started speaking about this. And if you had read the comments that are on, I believe it's on Lacey Chatter and a couple of other today, from the postings, from the article, you would see how the people in this town really feel about the job that you people are doing. You know, it's, I'm just, it's just me, but I read these things, and I know that you people see them. And I'm just saying, you need to start listening to the people who you are accountable to, who come to these meetings and take the time and are passionate, like myself, about the things that we care about in our town. I know a lot of us are not happy with the direction you're taking this town. And the only way you can keep not listening, you could keep going and locking yourselves in your office and say, we don't care what they say. You know, every three years, we get re-elected, and we're going to do whatever we want, because we are of this opinion that because we were elected, that we have the right to do whatever we want. And you don't, because you are elected to do what we want you to do. Remember that. And we have an election coming up in a few weeks, and it's a time for us to really evaluate the, you know, are we, are people who are on our government bodies doing the job that we, the people, we, the people, want them to do? And yes, we, the people, own the Warden House and Community Hall. That property was given to the citizens of Lacey Township, and it needs to remain that way. And I do hope, if we have to go the legal route, that we will stop this, and the people will win. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Can you pull that microphone a little closer?
Laura, you can move closer to it, too.
Yeah, thank you. You're very soft-spoken.
Yes, I am. Sorry. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I just-
Don't worry about it. Just say what you got to say.
You've heard lots of opinions about the gas station, and yes, it is a concern, because I'll be living within 500 feet of it, as you all would be if you weren't. I just wanted to, which you probably are aware of, but maybe some people in the town aren't aware of the environmental hazards that gas stations near watersheds and schools and libraries could cause. There's a lot of potential for contamination in many different ways. Placing a gas station within close proximity of a watershed, such as one leading to Enos County Park and Barnegat Bay here in Lacey, poses a significant environmental hazard due to the potential for contamination. Gas stations are known as source of pollutants that can infiltrate groundwater, surface water bodies, leading to a range of negative ecological and health consequences. The key contaminants that we would have to deal with coming out of that gas station would be petroleum hydrocarbons. These are primarily components of gasoline, diesel fuel, and other petroleum products. They can contaminate soil and groundwater, posing serious threat to aquatic ecosystems and human health. Leaking underground storage tanks. Gas stations often rely on USTs to store fuel. Over time, these tanks can corrode and develop leaks, allowing petroleum products to seep into surrounding environments. Spills and overflow. Accidental spills and overflow of fuel can occur during refueling operation due to equipment failure. These incidents can directly contaminate surface water bodies, such as streams, rivers, and lakes, and stormwater runoff. Rainwater that flows over gas stations can pick up pollutants, including petroleum hydrocarbons and other contaminants, and transport them to nearby waterways. The environmental impacts of having a gas station. Water contamination. Contaminants from gas stations can leach into groundwater, which can then flow into surface water bodies such as the Barnegat Bay. This can lead to habitat degradation, public health risks, economic impacts. Fuel storage tanks and pipelines pose another source of contamination. Though the design of both have improved over the past couple of decades, spillage at the pump is a more likely source of fuel release into nearby waterways. Johns Hopkins University researchers found that an average of 40 gallons of gasoline is spilled at a typical gas station per year at the pump. The researchers also found that significant portion of the spilled gasoline can mitigate through concrete pads and at many fueling stations. It can lead to soil contamination and air pollution. The release of volatile organic compounds from gas stations can contribute to air pollution, which have adverse effects on human health and the environment. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency echoed concerns about health risks associated with gas station emissions in their school sitting guidelines. They recommended screening school sites for potential health risks when located within 1,000 feet of a gas station. We have the library. We have Fork River School, not that far. And many residents that are within that 1,000 feet, but-
Did you know that there was a gas station on the other opposite corner for 30, 40 years?
I heard that.
Yeah, maybe longer. Yeah.
I heard there was a leak from the tank, and it's fantastic. I've lived, well, I'm not going to digress. Stormwater runoff contaminants from-
I'm not digressing either. I just wanted to make sure you knew there was a gas station on the opposite corner.
I heard. Stormwater runoff from gas stations can contain a variety of contaminants: petroleum hydrocarbons. This includes gasoline, diesel fuel, and other petroleum products that can leach from underground storage tanks, spills, and overfills. I can't say this one, so I'm going to give you the abbreviated version. PHAs. These are byproducts of the incomplete combustion of fossil fuels that can be found in gasoline, diesel fuel, and other petroleum products. Metals, heavy metals such as lead, copper, and zinc can be found in gasoline, diesel, and fuel. PCBs. These are persistent organic pollutants that were once used in electrical equipment and can be found in contaminated soil and groundwater. Other chemicals that can leach into our system from the gas station could be antifreeze, brake fluid, and cleaning agents. A number of compounds dangerous to humans' health are released from gas stations during vehicle fueling from underground storage tanks. These compounds include benzene, tyrolean, ethylene benzene, and BTEX. Measures to reliably resolve these adverse health effects are not employed in new gas stations.
Excuse me?
I know. My time is up. I just have to give you some suggestions. Given the impacts of any convenience store gas station located should be held to the highest standards and not given allowances to impede on the resident's health or environment. As township officials, you have the obligation to make sure that we, as residents, are protected from large corporations like Quick Check, to preserve our public's health and well-being. If you would like to consider the following suggestions going forward, I think it would be advisable to have at least 500 feet from the nearest home, daycare, school, or community center. Buffeted so store cannot be seen or heard from the nearest home, not within view of historic resources, and at least 500 feet from wells, springs, streams, reservoirs, or other highly sensitive ground, surface water resources. And in an area of market where it won't put any other businesses out of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Jim.
Jim Lotelli, Lacey Township. I had no plans on speaking, but listening to all the conversations, unlike Ms. Larray. I wasn't born here, but I've been here since '69. I've seen a lot of changes, and I've seen Democratic-controlled councilmen or committees, and Republicans, and mixed. And everybody over the years had their ideas. There was a gentleman at Houston Burford at the township in the zoning and planning department, Lou Darienzo. Lou Darienzo designed an entire historical preservation site. He spent a lot of time doing it, made the presentations doing it, and he was rejected by the governing body. And it included historic Bay Avenue, up and down East Lacey Road to the Captain's Inn, and various parts throughout the area. When I first came down here, it's the former community hall. It's the police station upstairs, municipal building downstairs, a one-car garage, and chicken coops in the back where they have flea markets. Everything has changed. There was a proposal at one time, just as we were trying to break away from Central Regional High School, to buy the old Gamble Farm, which is now-
Argos.
Argos Farm. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm a member, Scott. Argos Farm, thank you.
Yeah?
I'm a member, Scott. And anyway, there was a plan to take the entire complex of the schools and put them out there as a campus. Sell Fork River to medical facilities, the Fork River School, and develop Lacy Road, keeping some of the estates. Different people, different times, had their different opinions and changed. I stood here in 1981, reading an article in the Observer, Ocean County Observer, written by Don Bennett, when the Central Railroad was abandoned, which under federal and state law allowed any municipality, county, or other governing entities to take it over and make it for transportation, walk pass, and so forth. I had proposed, because it went from South Tons River and Beechwood there, all the way to Tucker. It was a perfect opportunity to make an alternate bypass Route 9, which would alleviate the boom that started on Route 9 in the mid-'80s. We all saw how the population of Lacy was exploding. And yet, there was opposition. That would almost self-funded itself, because it was well-known that the Ocean County Utility Authority was gonna run their main shorelines down there. It was also known that New Jersey Natural Gas was gonna run their 16-inch gas mains down to the power plant. And the town, the county, all along, everybody turned a blind eye. An investor bought it all, made a lot of money, millions, by selling it right away. And here we are, finally where we had our hands on it. We were in lawsuits for decades, I guess, not to develop it. So, now it's a nice little alternate route, but it could have been a much nicer route. Could have had a much nicer impact on Route 9. So, everybody over the generations and decades of sitting on this governing body, Republicans, Democrats, and mixtures, have good things and bad things. So, the point fingers at any one individual group of people. We all have our opinions. Some are good, sometimes they're not. But I've seen, as an outsider from Newark, some of the history. The one big thing that failed here was to preserve historical sites. My brother lives in New Orleans. You can't build a new building unless it's built in a 1700 style. That's preservation of history. So, what you have left is hopefully to get some people together and try to preserve some of the places. I mean, like the old Fork River Fire Station, it's over on, what's that, Lakeside Drive South?
Oak.
The old station.
Station Drive.
Yeah, Station Drive, thank you. And again, like, where the Mary's Dairy is, not against Mary's Dairy, I watched them tear down the old Fork River train station. Thousands of tickets, history just out the window. So, people have to look long-term, but you have to look back to know where you are. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for sharing. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Okay. $25 million investment in Lacy's, in New Jersey's historic sites. $25 million is out there in grants. We're eligible for them, okay? So, I'm just saying, like, part of what I do is I love to grant rate and things like that. We are eligible. We have the properties, but we have to, again, like you said, a team of people that are interested in doing this, and it's a lot of work. I do this as a volunteer. I've done it for years and I just, I'm not looking to bring, take money away from the township coffers. If we're eligible for funding that comes from the New Jersey Historic Trust, there's a lot of bells and whistles that you have to follow through. You have to know how to do the paperwork. I've been studying this for years now and it's not difficult, but it needs support. So, I'm putting it out there. Anybody that wants to help to put together possibly a committee that could get funding to help save historic sites, I would be more than happy to get involved. Thank you.
Yes, isn't that what we do? Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? Come right up. You're the closer now. Used to be Mr. Bender, but you seem to be the closer now. It's also nice to see you at the picnic, too. Can't beat the germ, would you?
That's right. Linda Miller, Fork River. Two things. The school and the roof and the things that are happening out there. That meeting was the second meeting that was held.
Right.
And the first meeting that was held was at the school. And there again, 5:00 in the afternoon, people are working, how do you get there? But there were a lot of people at that first meeting.
That's good.
It weren't just a few, 20, there was probably about 50 people. So, I wanna know, people are really interested in this. The other thing is the corner property on Route 9 on Lacy Road. I don't live anywhere near there, but it breaks my heart for the people that live there, because that is the part of a residential area. And our library is right there. And who cares that there was a gas station years ago? It's not there anymore and it was on the other side. Wasn't residential on that side. I mean, it's...
I was making, the point was, because there's a school right there, I was just making the point that we had a gas station and the Fork River School has been there forever.
Right.
And so, there was gas stations on the corner, too. I know, so it's all part of our history.
But it's not there anymore and we don't want a gas station on, a lot of us don't wanna...
You know, I didn't, I didn't say that we wanted it. There's not, there's not any point in any way, shape, or form that this committee said, "Oh, we want the gas station there at the corner." We reached out. Veronica LaRae busted her buns, reaching out to companies, restaurants, other individual businesses, trying to get them to purchase that property instead of what we are getting. So, it, no, no, you have to, give me the chance, too. There's no, nowhere did we say, "Oh, we want a gas station at the corner." They came to us because no one else was interested in purchasing it.
That's not the first gas station that came to us?
Right, no, right. We've had others coming for us.
Okay, well, my point is, my point is, I don't think any business should have been on that corner. I think it should have remained part of our town. And with the library sitting right there and homes all around, it's just not part of the people that live on Jones Road, how they're passionate about it. I don't live anywhere near Jones Road and I'm also passionate about what you're doing to our corner. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Aye.
No further business?
No further business. All right, we're outta here.